I'm going to get ready to start the meeting. We asked that everyone would turn off their cell phones, please. And we'll give Mr. Parker a moment. All right. I will call the meeting to order. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and for braving the snow. Welcome those at home. The meeting this evening will consist of the consent agenda, which is the minutes and the final plat for the Church of Christ. We will have a public hearing for the vacation for the Jack in the Box. We will then have the site plan design review for the Jack in the Box and then other business. That being said, I will take a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is the public hearing for the vacation. Once I open the public hearing, we'll have exhibits from the city attorney. We'll have staff comments. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a presentation. Witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed. Then we'll have any questions and general discussion and at that time I will pose the public hearing. That being said, I open the public hearing for the vacation 11-10-2807. Mr. McDonald.
Madam Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Before you this evening is a request from Jack in the Box to vacate two easements. You can see them slightly on this site map. Again, the site itself is located at the southeast corner of Mock Avenue and Seven Highway. Again, the request is to vacate two easements. One is a storm retention drainage easement and the second is portions of a separate drainage easement. Again, the site itself is located 808 Northwest Seven Highway. It's 1.32 acres in size. Property is zone general business. And my comments again will relate specifically to the vacation portion of the applicant's requests tonight. Mr. Holly will present separately, again, not in a public hearing forum, the site plan design review request from the same applicant. Back in 2006, you heard a preliminary plat and final plat request for Village Gardens subdivision, lots one and two. This is specifically related to lot one. Lot two is the now Village Gardens store. Lot one is essentially the former Village Gardens store. The Village Gardens subdivision, specifically in lot one, is located in a redevelopment area. However, Jack in the Box does not qualify for the tax abatement nor are they seeking the tax abatement associated with this redevelopment area. Along with this, again, Mr. Holly will present the site from staff's perspectives via site plan design review approval request. And that again is required for development of the site and is again concurrent with this vacation application. Staff does recommend approval of the vacation. Again, this request still needs to go forward to the city council after their meeting next Tuesday, January 18th, based on your recommendation tonight. Hopefully this shows a little bit more distinctly the areas in question. As stated in the staff report and per the applicant's attached narrative, the southeast corner includes a drainage easement and again, the applicant is requesting to remove a portion of that. Removing this will allow for the construction of the site's two trash enclosures, which again we'll get into detail with the site plan design review. The remaining portion of the drainage easement will be retained in order to cover an existing storm drain pipe. There are no utilities within a drainage easement that are proposed to be vacated, just the easement itself. In addition to that is the easement that's running primarily north-south at the west and northwest portion of the site. It's an, there's an existing 10-foot grading utility sewer, gas and sidewalk easement situated in the same area. Those will remain, but the drainage, storm retention and drainage easement itself is being proposed to be vacated. There's also a 25-foot building and landscape easement that as well will remain. So with that, again, the storm retention drainage easement is proposed to be vacated and the purpose for that is to allow for construction of monuments signage in that area. Again, this area as well does not have any utilities to be vacated within its easement, just the easement itself. With that, again, staff does recommend that the vacation of a platted storm retention drainage easement and portions of the additional drainage easement be approved pending your discussion and review tonight. Again, there is an attachment from the applicant and they explain this similarly as well and they refer to the requirements per the vacation application. And hopefully that has, they've answered that satisfactorily. Staff believes that is the case as well and I'm sure if there are any questions, I'll defer those specifically to the applicant who's here tonight.
All right. Very good. Any comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward? And we're going to just address just the vacations at this time.
Good evening. Yes. Sorry. My name is Brock Boyett. I'm construction manager for Jack in the Box, Inc., working out of my home office at 8312 Almond Road, Lenexa, Kansas. We're proposing the vacation of these two drainage easements because with the design that we've created with our drainage system, the one along Seven Highway is no longer needed. That one was originally intended or proposed to be an above-ground depression-type retainage area for the stormwater. We've chosen to go underground with piping and clean that up and not have a, an above-ground pond out there. The one in the back is just, it was designed as a potential place that the stormwater would drain to and be captured, but with, again, with our design, it's no longer necessary and that's the best place for us to put our trash enclosures to kind of get them furthest away from the streets and the public visibility. So, because these two are no longer really necessary in order to accommodate our proposed design, we're asking for them to be vacated. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Anybody Scott?
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? In opposition? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back up here for any discussion. All right. I will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to approve PAC 11-10-2807 for Jack in the Box.
Second.
I have a motion and second. May I have a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Throzen.
Aye.
Henning.
Aye.
Bellups.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Abbott.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. The next item we will address is the site plan design review for the Jack in the Box. Mr. Holly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And members of the commission, I'm going to start by passing this materials board around. It was submitted with the application. We won't get to the building for a few minutes, but at least you'll all have a chance to kind of get a look at what the materials are. Scott did an excellent job, of course, of providing the location of the site, so I really won't go over that and zoning and the number of acres. Jack in the Box then is proposing 2,937 square foot drive-through fast food restaurant. I won't really go much further into the tax abatement other than to say that it does correspond with condition number two. We are requesting that Jack in the Box provide us a letter confirming that they do not want the tax abatement and that they're not asking for that tax abatement. They wouldn't get it anyway, but that just confirms that we're all in agreement about that. So, that's reflected in condition number two. There was a traffic study that was provided with the, with the application. That traffic study, it has not been approved because we are waiting on a letter from MoDOT. Very typical for us to get that letter later in the process before our applications. It just takes MoDOT a while to get us that information. But a key issue that, that came up during the review of this really had to do with accesses and as you can see on the site plan, that is currently up, Jack in the Box originally proposed that there be a driveway.
Here? Along?
Mock Avenue. That does not line up with the McDonald's driveway.
Which is?
And because of that, there was some, some concern about how left-hand turn movements would make along Mock Avenue going into the two different restaurants and also coming out of. Also, you'll notice they're proposing a driveway, excuse me, here along Seven Highway. We had requested that they move the driveway along Mock Avenue further to the east so that it lines up with McDonald's and also that the driveway access along Seven Highway be a right-in and right-out only. And to that end, Jack in the Box agreed and has relocated the driveway. I have a larger scale version of this plan that we can put up, but the new plan is the lower one. And this highlighted area along Mock Avenue is the relocated driveway that's relocated slightly to the east. It comes in, if you were looking at it on the ground today, near the Village Gardens store in front of. And the yellow highlight line would then correspond with the McDonald's driveway across the street. So as you can see, they're lined up and that does take care of our concern with the left-hand turning movements. We also requested, and they have agreed, to put a median in Highway seven so that there would not be a left-hand turn movement for southbound traffic along Seven Highway. That median is also shown in, highlighted in yellow.
On the board drawing right here.
So with, with those changes to the plan, staff feels much more comfortable with the access going forward. Again, you'll see both of those, both of those reflected in our conditions. Condition number three is the condition concerning the raised median along Seven Highway and then condition number four is the condition with respect to relocating the driveway further to the east. They have actually, with this revised plan, met both of those conditions. We leave the conditions in only because they're contingent upon those drawings coming in with the building plan so that we see that as they move forward. Condition number five is the condition that corresponds with MoDOT providing us their letter of approval. If you have any questions about that, Cesar is here. He has talked with MoDOT and we know that MoDOT is, is, is fine with the proposed changes as we've shown them and prefer those as well. It's just a question of getting that letter from them. The parking on the site.
This is the revised plan?
The parking on the site, they are, they are required to have 32 parking spaces as well as eight spaces for the drive-through portion of the restaurant. Those would be the queuing spaces, of course. They are providing 36 spaces, I'm sorry, 35 spaces as well as, of course, the eight queuing spots in the drive-through, therefore meeting the code. They will be relocating the sidewalk along Seven Highway and I think as well along Mock Avenue, pushing them back just a little bit towards their store. The signage, which is, there's a paragraph on the signage on page five of 10 of the report, corresponds with condition number nine and although you receive materials on the signage, the signage will be meeting our standard sign code and so it will not come back before you unless they propose something outside of our sign code, which at this point we don't think that they have. And so we will handle their signage administratively. But you do have that in your, your report if you'd like to look at it. Again, we're working now with the older site plan. I apologize for that. We did not get a revised landscape plan that shows the accesses at this point, but that's again why that condition is there. So with the old site plan, nothing really will change as far as the landscaping goes. It will stay pretty much the same other than the landscaping along Mock Avenue will extend further through that driveway because of course that driveway will be relocated to the east. The, the chart that was provided on page six of 10 shows that in fact, when we did our count, they will meet the requirement as far as their proposed plant units. However, in going through that chart, one thing I did notice is that the parking lot landscaping comes up two plant units short and those two plant units were actually made up in the transitional buffer to the east, the buffer seat, and in the open space where they've picked up an additional two plant, two plant units total. They may have to relocate those two plant units into an area that we're sure counts for parking, but in, in reviewing the landscape plan, I see a couple areas that could go either way and, and we should be able to attribute those units to the parking. So, in fact, they will meet their parking requirement and I think they'll be able to do it even without adjusting the landscape plan at this point. But we will sit down as staff and talk with Lauren and make sure that, that we're all in agreement that those units can be and if they can't, we'll move them into the parking Stormwater detention, as has been explained really previously and I won't go into a lot of detail, but this plan does show where the stormwater detention will be located.
Primarily, it will be in this area and it will be in underground heights.
As shown in the dash line there. They have supplied a stormwater study and the Public Works Department has approved the preliminary study. As is typical with these developments, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the detention plans will need to be submitted to the Public Works Department. That's when they include all of the engineering work and at that point they will review in detail and approve those then through the, through the building permit process. And that corresponds with condition number six provided in the report. Backing up just, just a bit, on the same page though, six of 10, there was discussion earlier about the trash enclosure and the stormwater detention area vacancy. And as you can see on this plan fairly easily because of the highlight.
And here is where they're proposing their dumpsters. That's also where that storm, stormwater drainage easement was and is requested to be vacated and you can see how they sit in there. That probably is definitely the best place on the site for those dumpster enclosures
Moving into the building design and I'll just put up the primary elevations, although you do have the, the south elevation as well as the east elevation in your packets. The main building material is stucco with a color combination of beige, a red and a rust color and a pale yellow or straw color. The building design accent features and the materials include stone veneer, of course, on the bottom and on the main body of their column or their, I guess those projections as shown in the overhead. They do have black metal awnings, the exterior wall lighting and fairly well-defined cornice at the top. Nice, nicely done. I think the building design aspect of this report on page eight of 10 covers it, covers it well. It's a fairly simple building, but it certainly has, has a lot of detail in its exterior features and a good variety of materials. So we're pretty, pretty happy with the, what they've submitted from the building standpoint. They are providing a seven-foot screen wall in the southeast corner of the building in order to screen the mechanical equipment. That's reflected and then of course they'll have to screen the roof equipment and any other equipment that they have and that's reflected then in condition number seven of the staff report. With that, staff is recommending approval of the site plan and design review and we are recommending there be nine conditions. Those conditions are located on page nine and 10 of the staff report and I will be happy to answer any questions if you have any and the applicant is here as well, as you've already heard and they would be happy to come up as well.
Any questions? Mr. Abbott.
I've got one obvious question from being a whole-timer here. When we first, when Village Gardens first moved to their current location, that lot was going to be there, it was promised a sit-down restaurant and when I told people that Jack in the Box is coming in a lot, my neighbors asked me what happened to the sit-down restaurant?
The, when Village Gardens came in, they proposed a 353 redevelopment and that involves in tax incentives. It's abatement on real property and I think on, on personal property as well and it's a descending abatement over a 20 to 25-year period where you get 100% abatement maybe for the first 10 years, excuse me, 10 years. Then it drops to 75 for maybe the next five and, and 50 for the next five and maybe 25 for the next five, but it's a, it's a tax abatement. And it really didn't have to do with the land use other than if you wanted that tax abatement. So they originally had hoped that they would get a sit-down restaurant and I think actually I noticed that the magras are here and they may want to address that. They tried, they tried several occasions to get a sit-down restaurant on that property, but it has not been successful and therefore they now have the Jack in the Box after the property is sat vacant for a while and decided to go with that and then not ask for the tax abatement at all. The zoning for the property has always allowed for, for this type of use. It was really a question of whether or not you wanted the tax abatement.
So no, no tax abatement was given to Village Gardens?
You know, that's a, go ahead. Thank you.
Originally, 353 tax abatement, which is basically on real property in the buildings, was given and is allowed to be given for 10 years and then at 100% and up to another 15 years at, at 50%. Originally, it was set up so that the lot that the new Village Garden is on would be abated. The other lot would be, only be abated if it had a sit-down restaurant on it. They were required for the first couple of years to, I think it was two years, to try to market it to a sit-down restaurant. They were unsuccessful. The city and they worked out to allow it to go another year, another two years with possibility of being abated if it was either a sit-down restaurant or a restaurant or a use that was approved by the city council. It was never going to be abated if it was a fast food restaurant type operation and that's why one of the requirements, one of the conditions is that, that Jack in the Box formally recognized that that is the case. Actually, it would have to be approved anyway by the city council. Really, the letter is to recognize that the city council has decided not to, to allow it to be abated with that use. It had always been hoped that a sit-down restaurant would go there and it was marketed very hard, but the market just didn't evidently allow for it to occur.
And the city provided the language and I've highlighted probably the key portion of that language. We provided that language to Jack in the Box and we are anticipating and they've agreed to provide us with a letter that states that, that they understand that the city will not give them the abatement and they also understand that they cannot ask for the abatement.
Mr. Sullivan.
I read that Dunkin' Donuts is considering the site just south of there for a drive-through. Has consideration been given to their driveways with these, the driveways for this site?
The, the, frankly, no. We knew, we know about Dunkin' Donuts. When this development came through, we, we did our review based on this development and, and again, knowing that Dunkin' Donuts has, has some plan possibly for that site, but since we have not seen any kind of plan, it's pretty difficult to plan for it. What we will end up doing is when they come in, now that Jack in the Box has come forward, depending on, depending on, you know, what the overall approval is, we will look at their site now in relation to Jack in the Box's site as opposed to trying to guess what they're, what they're hoping to do and making Jack in the Box perhaps change something. Frankly, Jack in the Box's driveway along Highway seven and the fact that they have the right-in, right-out only in their driveway, I'm not sure how much that would be impacted by anything they're doing on the Long John Silver's site anyway. The Long John Silver's site will have to be evaluated sort of on its own merit.
Nathan.
Mr. Banks.
You want to go first?
My, my question is kind of a follow-up to Mr. Sullivan.
All right, Mr. Bill. We'll start on this side.
Was there any consideration when you were reviewing these plans to setting up a cross-access?
Yes.
To go into that lot knowing it was for sale and would probably be redeveloped even if you didn't know what the plans were?
Yes. Jack in the Box is required to and has provided a cross-access easement and that cross-access easement?
as well, they can connect.
So would that easement then continue on into the strip center on the other side of that lot?
It is supposed to.
South of it.
It is supposed to.
Is there room still to have that cross-easement there if you still have that drainage easement back there behind, starting at Long John Silver's and continuing all the way through?
I mean, let the applicant address how they worked that out. I know that there was a discussion of the easement and the need for the easement and I think I'll let him discuss that as far as what the room is available there.
Mr. Banks.
Mr. Holly, I have a little bit of a concern over the median. It's going to go down seven because I do know, having worked in the building across the street, that there is only, it's very difficult to get to it already on Mock because it has a median. So when you take a right on Mock, you have to turn around and literally go past the median, turn around and then go in it. Now, if we have a median there now, it's going to be where no traffic can get into it unless they go back up, go around, go north and go in it off of seven. I'm talking about where Cole Baker was for years, you know?
I'm confused. Can you, can you kind of clarify a little bit?
Okay. If you're coming south.
I'm not understanding which way you're going here.
Okay. Let's go south on Seven Highway. If you go south, the only way that you're going to be able to get into that If you go south, the only way that you're going to be able to get into that building is to go into the entrance on 7th and go right. There will not be, or you go Mach, go right.
You would have to go.
But there's a median there, going on Mach, I mean, on the outer road, pa, by Winstead's. Take a right on.
Going west on.
Going west. Go south to Mach and 7th.
Why are you going west on?
Uh, I see what you're saying. No, she's talking about.
The building across the street on 7th Highway.
Oh, on the other side.
If there's a median, you can't go left into their building. The only way you can go is to go right. You can't get out unless you go south. If you go into it on the outer road, you got to go down and go around the median again. So, what we're doing is we're blocking any other really access to get in and out of that very easy.
On the west side, 7th.
Because right now, you could come up to the, if you're coming from the south, going north, you can turn in left into that exit without having to go down, go around the median, and go in that way. But if we put a median in there, then nobody can go, if they're coming north, they're going to go to the light, go to the outer road to the left, go up and around the median, and to get into the building.
My problem is the, the congestion that you're going to have at that intersection with having that median open.
But the thing is, if they have driveways the right way, going right in only, they won't be able to come out that way.
You're talking about putting a T-bone, but those T-bones, as Caesar's going to, will probably attest, do not work.
I'm just, I feel that it, it, you know, I just wanted to bring my opinion up because it's very difficult already, and now we're going to really make it more difficult for those businesses that are in there now.
Well, I understand what you're saying on that, absolutely. Forgot that Mach, I think their intersection's closer off of Mach on the old Colebaker line, I know what it is now.
Yeah, I know. It's a hunting place and a cigar place.
It's closer to the intersection than, than farther away, is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's not, it's not across from each other. I just wanted to bring my.
Madam Chair, I, I think, as Mr. Holly mentioned his comments, I don't know if it was abundantly clear, but, uh, the median and the, uh, access moving further east on Mach were things that MoDOT was in favor of as well. And again, being 7th Highway as a state highway, the median is actually their requirement, so, that's where, that's where a lot of that is coming from. Not as though, we're necessarily in disagreement with it, but that it's something that they have the jurisdiction over. Median or no median, and they, they decided and chose median.
Is that because of the, the right-in-only lane going into?
Essentially, it to, to limit, to keep, uh, southbound traffic from turning directly into that 7th Highway access and having that conflict of, of the rash of cars going northbound, turning left, going westbound on Mach at that light, because there would be an immediate conflict there. And people, you would, you will have head-on collisions, and it's just a give.
Well, it's a bad intersection already.
Right, and the median is going to, we're just going to eliminate, limit that. And again, the, the median itself only goes to the southern property line of Jack in the Box. It's not going to extend any further, like you see in front of.
So, the, the other businesses will still have their entrance that you could turn left into, so it's not going to go that far?
It's going to stop at the southern property line, essentially, uh, southern property line with, uh, Jack in the Box.
I can really tell where it goes on.
Right, right. So, again, technically, you could turn left going southbound into the Long John Silver's.
I, I think, the overall plan for Highway 7.
Right.
The overall plan for Highway 7, um, from MoDOT's standpoint and according to our Highway 7 corridor plan, is to try to limit left-hand turns along there only because it creates conflicts and every time you do it, and it's a fairly busy highway. But I understand what you're saying, and you're right. Now, in order to, for northbound traffic to go into the, um, property on the west, they will have to go down to Mach Avenue, and they'll have to make that left turn at Mach Avenue and then go in, uh, make another left turn off of Mach Avenue to get in, and sometimes that's pretty difficult because traffic backs up on Mach.
Oh, I think, is there some way that we could consider, you come and you dead-end to this building, and I'm probably, um, into that business, and if there's a way to come out of that business, or come in and out of it from, what's the name of that street?
Mach.
No, Mach, um, I don't know.
Hearns? Basically, Hearns to the south?
Hearns, and where you turn left and it dead-ends right there to.
No, that's, that's actually Mach, and the other is the outer road. If there's some way you could tie into that dead-end.
Tie it in.
To be honest, that was not anything we looked at with this development plan, and we'd probably have to.
Well, not with this.
Yeah, we'd have to take it back and, and see if there's any.
And I don't know if, I don't know what the, I'm sorry. I don't know if Caesar would know if there'd be an opportunity, if MoDOT would allow a, a U-turn, you know, if you're going north on, on 7th to allow that.
Oh, yeah, on 7th and, 7th and the outer road.
To allow a, a U-turn on a green, on a green arrow. I'm just saying, like they do with southbound at, um, at RD Mize, for example.
We couldn't propose that.
I don't know if that's something that they, that they, that they propose, or they, they monitor that. I'm just not sure what their signalization would end up being.
Well, I just wanted to.
I think it would, I think it would depend on the configuration, the end configuration of the south outer road as to whether or not they would want to allow any kind of access into that cul-de-sac onto Mach Avenue, and I just, I'm not sure if we know what that configuration is yet. Are you, you know what I'm talking about, though, right? The cul-de-sac that Mach Avenue now comes into because of the reconfiguration of south outer road, and whether or not there would be any opportunity to open a driveway up onto that, and I just don't know if. Yeah. That would be something they'd just have to come to us and talk to us about.
I know, though, that intersection's been on the master plan.
Yeah.
For 7th Highway for years, and, and the design's pretty much the exact same. I mean, there's in-between, um, well, that, what is it, Vesper? Yeah, Vesper and, and Mach, there's, I think there's only one, there's only going to be one curb-cut area on that median anyways, if I'm not mistaken, and that's, that's been designed, what, 15, 20 years or so?
I know, it's been in the.
Well, I mean, I, I just know that there's really, it's just hard to get in and out of businesses, and I don't want to make it harder.
I agree with that.
Okay. Any more discussion or questions for staff? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Holly. Could the applicant like to come forward?
Do I need to swear in again, or?
No, no.
Okay, just to make sure. Um, may I address some of the, uh, comments and concerns made earlier? Um, we've been working with, uh, staff and with MoDOT for quite some time on this application and this site layout. Um, the curb-cut on Mach is existing today. Uh, that goes directly from this parcel onto Mach, and that was built as a part of the overall redevelopment of Village Gardens. So, we were planning, obviously, to just use it, because that's the way it was originally intended. Um, in conversations with MoDOT and staff, the concern was the lining up with the, uh, with the McDonald's cut across the street. Uh, we have met with the, um, property owners and gotten permission from them to relocate that to the Lot 2, to the east, and line it up with the McDonald's lot, and then eliminate the cut directly onto Mach. See here, the, uh. The existing location of the cut was in this area, and we moved it all the way up to here, directly across from the McDonald's cut, and just here, so it stays lines up. And that closes the one that's currently going directly onto the site. The, uh, the median was another topic of lively conversation, um, not something that a business such as ours likes, because it does, uh, limit turning movements and it has, uh, some impact on convenience, which is a very important thing to us. And we had originally proposed a pork-chop T-bone type of a raised median in the driveway off of 7th to force that right-in and right-out and not have a median. But in order to make that a little more foolproof, because people can dive in the wrong way, and, uh, we've probably all seen it done, I won't admit to ever having done it, but, uh, the median can eliminate that as a possibility. Now, it does go. To where it, it ends right lined up with our southern property line right there. And there is one driveway across the street here, here, that you can see is impacted by that median. But the next one here, the next turn in here is past, past that median. So, only that one cut, uh, will be impacted in a negative way by that median across the street on the, uh, on the west side, so. So, that was something that, uh, became a, uh, non-negotiable, and we agreed to do it, uh, to comply with the concerns of MoDOT and staff. Uh, we have just received, in fact, this morning, the tax abatement waiver letter signed, and I'm reviewing that now to make sure that it meets all of the wording properly, and then I'll be bringing that, uh, in. Um, we have, we talked about the trash enclosure in the back, and just wanted to point out, we've got two of them there. Uh, one of them is a regular trash dumpster, and the other one is for recycling corrugated, and, because we generate a lot of corrugated, so, we've got a dumpster, and especially for that, and its own enclosure. We've got them angled just so they're easier to get in and out of without driving over Um, we do have the access easement here, which goes all the way from Mach along the eastern property area and extends all the way to the property line to the south. Line up that would provide future access for whatever might be to the south of us. Uh, we haven't worked with any off-site site plans of anybody else, but that's what that's intended to be for. Now, as a part of the relocation of the curb-cut on Mach from where it is today to where it will be, we'll need to then work with the property owners to get access easements for that extra off-site portion to the east, and we'll get that. Um, and the last thing I just want to point out is, this area right here is a real large landscaped area. We originally were showing, uh, eight, nine parking places in there, and that, we were already met code by, by a couple in excess, and we felt like, for now, let's just, uh, show that as landscaped area. It's there if we need it, if the, if the store does as well as we hope it does, then we've got the room to add some additional parking places without affecting the, uh, overall site plan. Circulation doesn't change, none of the other parking changes or anything, we just need to make some adjustments to the landscaping, of course, to accommodate the lost plants from that area. But it allows us to add a few more parking places in without any impact on the remaining site.
If I could just get you to clarify, then, those, I, those plant units are not included in the plant unit requirements?
I think that we've got, the plant units that we're showing on here are the ones that are all required. Now, if we develop that as parking, then we would need to, you know, accommodate that additional parking with some more.
Say that day and something else.
Yeah, and we'll just rearrange it and, and make, make that happen. But I think we've got a plan here that meets the, the, uh, requests and concerns of, uh, staff as well as MoDOT, and it, it, uh, still maintains our onsite patterns of, of traffic circulation and gives us our, uh, our building that we know is a, uh, big enough to handle the, the, the volume that we hope to do there, so. Be happy to answer any other questions that the commission may have.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I will say that I came here from St. Louis for our first experience with Jack in the Boxes. You've come a long ways for Jack in the Boxes.
Yes, sir, we have.
What are your plans for when you would start building?
Well, um, on this one?
Mm-hmm.
So, as we get a building permit, now that's where we, that's where we are right now, is, uh, working our way through the, this process. We'll be at council next Tuesday night, assuming that, uh, tonight goes well, and, uh, and then we'll be, right after that, be filing for our building permits, and then that'll go through the process and bidding, of course, and get started, and, uh, I would hope we'd get started in the spring.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I understand that, uh, Mr. Swope, uh, you may have some input and some additional information you might give us concerning the property on the west side.
Okay.
Would the members be willing to hear?
Sure, yes.
All right, thank you.
No, I, I, uh, came in support.
Can you come up to the microphone, sir, so that we can all benefit from your information?
Uh, I came in support of the neighboring project, because that corner does need something other than weeds and things that go with it. No disrespect. He's been a good neighbor. But I was not aware of the median going down 7th Highway, and you hit it right on the head. I, I had no knowledge of it till I came in here this evening. It will be physically impossible to get to the property on the west with the median there, 'cause now on Mach, you already have an island that'll disallows you to turn left into that property.
Can you tell me the property, there is, there's one, one drive that will be affected?
Now, well, it'll be that whole corner.
Is there a cross-access between those two properties?
Yes, they are. We own them both.
So, if someone was wanting to turn west, they could turn west prior to the median and then have cross-access to that next lot to the north?
Yes, they could, if they could get across 7th Highway, and it's been that way, well, forever, and it, I know of no problems there. Do you, Jim?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure we're on the same page here.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
No, you're going north on 7th Highway, and you turn left onto the property.
That's what I'm wondering.
I don't know of any either, and to answer your question, there is cross-traffic from one building to the other?
So, from the, the property on the corner?
Yes.
And the property is at the cigar store?
The cigar store is in front.
Okay, and then the next door is Verizon.
Uh, T-Mobile, I'm sorry.
Or T-Mobile. Um, is there access between those two pieces of property?
Well, T-Mobile I don't have anything to do with.
Okay, and that's the property to the south that you can actually access prior to hitting that, where the median will be?
No, it's, I'm, I'm concerned about the property I'm involved in, which is a cigar shop in the, uh, whatever they call that.
Hunting place.
Hunting place, and then another property behind that, but, but virtually, you cannot get to that property, because you come up 7th Highway, you've got a median, you turn west, and as you turn past going that way, there's another island, a median, you cannot turn left. Then if you go up to the next street and come back to Mach, now you're at a dead-end there, and I can't conceive anybody working that damned hard to get into one of those business properties.
Okay.
And another thing I want to bring to Jim's attention, that's not service anymore. That is general business on the corner. You still got it on your maps. It's been that way for almost three years.
All right, well, thank you very much, sir. I do appreciate your information.
I wasn't through.
Oh!
No, I, I, I do support this project with my heart, and I come over here basically to see what beautiful front would be on there that would be our neighbor, but I was not aware of this median, and I think it could be worked out if they can rework Mach some way, and if Jim can allow me an appointment sometime this week, uh, I would like to come in and sit and see if we can't hit on something, 'cause we got to have an entrance off of Mach to get to those buildings. Do you not think so, Jim? I'll, I'll talk to you this week.
Okay.
Do you want me to call you, or are you going to call me? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, for your time. All right. Is there any additional discussion? All right. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, um, on case file SPDR-11-10-2809 with the nine staff conditions for approval.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Other business. You have, um, information on the planning and land use law, um, meeting that will be held in Lee's Summit. Mr. Allen, did you have any additional information you'd like to give us on that?
Uh, yes, please. Uh, Lee Summit has requested that, um, you let, or we let them know, uh, who will be attending by the end of next week, so by Friday, January 21st.
Does everyone know at this point if they're going to be able to attend or not?
I don't know.
All right.
So, we can just send an email to Karen or to me by the end of next week with your yea or nay, either way, please do so.
Very good.
And we'll get, uh, we'll get the final numbers, and we have a preliminary agenda. We'll have a keynote speaker, uh, Mark White, who is, uh, expert in planning and land use law right here in, uh, Eastern Jackson County, and, um, he's a national speaker as well, so we'll have him, and then we'll, uh, be going into some. And then we'll be going into some, reviewing some case studies and doing some breakout sessions with your peers from Lee's Summit Independence. So, we'll have a little bit more interaction we did last one.
Excellent.
So, encourage everyone to attend. Again, it's free, and there'll be dinner provided as well. So, hopefully, it'll be another good event.
Very good. The other thing that we had come up was the meeting that will be held in Boston. And I did speak earlier this evening with Mr. Graham, and he's going to check his schedule. He has expressed a desire and an interest to go and soak up all that information that'll be available. So, Mr. Graham will get with you, Mr. Allen?
Sure, that'd be wonderful.
And confirm once he checks his schedule.
That'd be great, so.
Excellent.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Allen, Green Remodeling Idea Book.
That was Karen's idea? No. That is a book put out by Mid-America Regional Council. They just recently updated it last year, 2010, and provided each of the member cities that were part of the Environment and Energy Conservation Block Grant, the federal Department of Energy Block Grant that we received some money for, Ball Field Lights, things of that sort, Blue Springs. All the member communities that received that grant funding, they provided multiple copies of these. So, in any of your dealings, clients, business, if you would like additional copies of that, just let us know, and we can get you additional copies upwards of a thousand, if need be. But there were many hundreds of copies that we received. So, we're eager to disperse those to folks who can use them, again, to residents as well. It is also available online. I don't have that address handy, but it is available online as like a PDF as well. Thinking green, obviously. But that's, it's nice to have a book as well, just some ideas for, especially remodeling. I'm sure Mr. Graham can attest to that. That's kind of a hot thing right now, doing green building, but especially green remodeling. I think Mr. Parker can agree as well. Green is the new way to go. So, speaking of which, you may have noticed that there was no information about a developers workshop for 2011 like we had the last five or six years. We're looking at kind of redoing that this year and looking at something focusing on green building and green ordinances and such. And we may be doing that a little bit later in the spring than normal. So, not catering to folks who may be participating in an event April 5th, per se, but trying to wait until after elections this spring and maybe looking at kind of late April, early May, and doing something in kind of the green building aspect. It also gives staff some time to coordinate things as well. So, just a little side note that we're foregoing the typical developers workshop this year and looking forward to possibly doing something in kind of the green building, green codes side of things. So, stay tuned for that.
Very good. All right. Is there anything else that we need to discuss? Yes?
I spoke with Mr. Holly prior to the meeting about Grego Landscaping, which is located on the North Outer Road.
Yes.
And they have not been able to set up a meeting with the owner because he's out of town. That business is operating, I think they're making a mockery of everything that we do here because they've been operating for over six months, totally out of compliance. They've never come here for any kind of a site plan or anything. And it's a very ugly site. It's a graveyard for railroad ties. Something needs to be done about that business. It should not be allowed to continue for over six months, totally out of compliance. Hopefully, there'll be something happen fairly soon on that.
Yes, we are, Jim, if you want to mention, we are planning to meet with them shortly.
Yeah, the property owner is supposed to be back, or the, not the property owner, I'm sorry, the business owner is supposed to be back in town this week. And when he gets in town, he's supposed to contact me to set up a meeting. And at this point, I'm betting that that meeting will be next week, probably on Thursday, which is our typical pre-application date. And from that point on, we can get them moving in the direction of getting an application then to you for your review. That's where we stand right now.
Can you keep us updated, whether it be by email or whatever, and let us know if that meeting actually does take place?
We try to place, I'll give a synopsis of all pre-application meetings in our weekly plan notes. So, maybe another week or two before you see that. And I think Karen emails those out to everybody weekly. So, we'll watch that for the kind of the general update.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
I'll put it on my calendar for Thursday afternoon to give you all just an update to let you know if he, in fact, gets a hold of you this week to set that meeting up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holly. Appreciate that.
Is there a brochure that when you get a business license, this is what you have to do?
We've discussed that at length with Finance Department in terms of what type of information to provide. A number of folks just do renewals of business licenses. There's so many different businesses out there. We try to provide them with information even just on signage, you know, who to contact.
But I mean, when they first come, and it's a new license?
Right. No, we, no, there isn't, to be honest. And that's something we've talked about, trying to put something together to give information to folks, or at least direct them to the people to talk with. And we've had some success, but yet there's not a citywide, here's how you, you know, here are the next steps when you look to license your business. And again, I'm not sure where Gregos fit in, if, you know, they're, we deal with a number of businesses. We had over 80 this last year that did not renew or did not have business licenses. And so, we're looking at, are they still in business? Are they operating without licenses? I don't recall if they're on the list, but unfortunately, there are a number of bad apples out there that do operate without business licenses. And we have to do a lot of follow-up and chasing around, like we are in this case.
Does Grego even have a business license?
I believe they do. I would have to double-check that to see how or where that operated. But that's always something, it's almost a weekly occasion. One comes across our desk, and we're like, where did this come from? Should we sign off on this? How long have they been operating? How did we miss this earlier? But I'm, we can get some numbers from Finance Department. But as you mentioned, there are hundreds, thousands of business licenses out there. And obviously, there are always some that are gonna slip through. And that's our job, is to try to catch those and clean those up.
So, if a business might just take over, like if somebody had a business there, like a new tattoo parlor that just popped up, so that was a travel agency before? They could just go ahead and, you know, move into another business, another type of business and have location value based approval?
If the zoning is fits, and that's really all that's required with the business licenses, looking at zoning, number of employees, you know, if state licensing is required, they have to provide proof of that. And some of those things are fairly minimal in what's required. Again, just trying to eliminate any extra unnecessary paperwork, per se. But again, if you look at our zoning chart, what's allowed in GB, there's a whole slew of businesses that can be allowed there.
But if they build a new building, though, they have to come-
Right. And that's, exactly. That's where those happen, is when you have new development, when you have expansion of development. And as Mr. Sullivan pointed out, if something kind of sneaks through and it's not obvious to a lot of people, it can get missed. And then we have to do a lot of cleanup. And cleanup is a lot harder than catching it in the first place.
Yeah, because that was a daycare at first, that location.
Right. And it was also, it was not in the, is not in the city. If you recall, it was annexed. That was an annexed property through our usual process. And then it sat, we had some plating issues, I believe, out there with drainage and such. And it kind of sat in kind of this recurring cycle of get us more information, get us more information. All of a sudden, there's a landscaping business. When that happened, how, who?
I saw all the railroad ties, but I didn't know to come tell you.
But again, a lot of those things start to creep up, and before you know it, you have violations. And that's why we have busy code enforcement officers in our office as well, so.
Speaking of tattoo parlors, has anybody noticed the one that just opened up? We're next door to where the Jack in the Box is gonna be?
No, it's not next door to that one.
No, it's downstream.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, same.
Isn't that strip center?
Strip, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know. That was a question mark.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten one lately, and I can't tell you.
What makes it one original?
Yeah, there's one by there, that old cigarette store.
By Fleming's?
Yeah.
Yeah, Seven and Main. Yeah, east side there.
I think they had two for one special after all.
I think, okay, the Mach, I think. It's down, is it in the same strip with Lamar's?
The Mars?
Yeah.
There's one there.
Yeah, I mean, I just, it just popped up. And I just happened to see a tattoo parlor.
But that's a business that's allowed in there?
Right. I think the state regulates the health side of things.
Yeah, they're regulated.
Yeah. Coincidentally, the city of Independence just passed an ordinance much like our payday loan ordinance in terms of limiting number, per capita setbacks and things. So, they have a cap that they're already at, which is eight. So, they already have eight.
Tattoo parlors?
Tattoo parlors in Independence.
I'm thinking more of the signs that, I mean, it's a pretty good sized sign they got up. So, I mean, for the size of the building, just look out for it.
And we try to do a lot of follow-up with those as well. If they don't have a sign permit, we try to make sure that we, well, we do make sure that they-
It's a huge sign.
They go through that process, but-
There you go. There's your brochure.
One thing you have to remember is, a lot of these, you know, and Travis can agree with you on it, it's very difficult, especially as property owners on the strip centers. You'll have a, you're leased to a, for example, I'll give you a perfect example. We leased a spot to a bar, which two years down the road or one year down the road turned into a strip club without Warren's knowledge. It wasn't very pleasant. We end up having every single one of our windows shot out, everything, because of churches. But I mean, we can't control, you try to control within your lease, but it's still very difficult once they get in there to get them back out.
But I'm just talking about signs.
You know, the signs and all, yeah.
Gosh, Mike, that's been years.
Something about Title Max had a sign request approved. Is that an additional loan company?
No, they replaced existing payday loan. There are two that actually essentially became new franchisees of Title Max.
Speaking of signs, when are the signs on the side of trucks parked in parking lots gonna go away?
Which ones are you referring to?
Oh, like Betty's Chicken and, you know. Yeah, but the truck's still there. The truck's still there with a big sign on it.
Well, Mr. Billick was a part of our Sign Code Task Force last year.
Yeah, so I wondered when that's gonna-
We no longer allow signs, I can't remember the language. Mr. McDowell can help me out. But in terms of contiguous property, you can't have a sign sitting more than 24 hours. So, I know Highway 7 chiropractic, old U-Haul with their sign on the side, it moves around. If you see it, it's different location all day long. And that's, I wouldn't say loophole, but that's allowed. It's, again, if they move it and they use it for something with their business and they park it back, again, Rent-A-Center is another one. So, we mentioned Betty's, Village Gardens. We've gone to the extreme of chalking tires to see if they move, and most of them do. And therefore, that's part of normal business. And so, you know, Sign Code Task Force and the council chose not to further regulate that.
So, it's like a subdivision. You have to move every 24 hours? They can go move around too? They could go move it up, move it back?
Okay. Anything else? Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 24th. Mr. Allen can help you.
Sure. Mid-America Regional Council put this together. They recently updated it just last year. I've, I'm not, it's not quite hyperbole saying that there are about 1,000 copies that we have in our office. We have several boxes. So, if you do have, if you have a need for several dozen or something, just let me know. Send me an email. We can get you a stack. I think Mike Peterman in our office is the one who has those. But yeah, it was, the updates were paid for in part with that Environment and Energy Conservation Block Grant through Department of Energy. So, they paid for updates. And yeah, it's, I think it's very good. And yeah, real estate industry, building industry, I think a lot of folks can utilize those. And we have a number out at our counter as well.
I really like all the website resources in the back. That's awesome.
And if I do find that website, I'll be sure to pass it along as well. There is a PDF of it somewhere, I think, on the MARC website. So, it's, yes.
M-A-R-C dot org.
Yep, thank you. M-A-R-C dot org. It should be pretty easy to find on that.
Slash per subs, slash.
All right. Anything else? I would take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.